Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Members present include myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, our Township Manager. His excuse for the evening, in her stead, we have our Budget and Finance Manager, Lucas Devois.
It's Brian. Hello.
And also Supervisor, and our Engineer John Trustler, and our Solicitor Ron Karasik. We do not have any announcements. Robert, is your hearing yet? Okay. Okay. First order of business is the meeting minutes of the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Regular meeting. Have either of my two colleagues had a chance to review those minutes?
I'm making a motion.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we do not have any public hearings this evening, but I will get to that later because there is an explanation necessary for that, for those that are here regarding Orchard BJK. We do not have any plans to act on this evening, but we will move along to our Solicitor's report. Ron, if you want to note anything.
As I always do, you had received my written report earlier in the month. However, the only things that address are the upcoming hearings for which matters need to be scheduled. And I've got about four or five contracts and agreements and other things on my desk that I need to look at for purposes of the the VIGON matter and also for the related file, which I can't break down with respect to that. So but other than that, there's nothing else. Nothing else pressing as far as I know.
Great. Thank you. John, anything to note for the Engineers' Report?
Really not at this time, no.
Okay. That said, under new business, we do not have a consent agenda this evening. The rest of our agenda is primarily some fairly small matters, but all that warrant a bit of discussion. The first is on Marshall's Falls. I wanted to relay, as is in our packet, we did get an update that DCNR is recommending additional funding for our park at Marshall's Falls. But our engineering consultant on the project is currently out of his office, so I would like to see us table the award of the bid until our next meeting. Robert, Brian, do either of you have any? Anything to say on that? At least we got the money.
I don't. No, no, we'll bring it up at the next meeting. Fine. Barry, I said we'll be back by then.
Yep.
Yeah, sure.
Perfect. Great. So next is the consideration to schedule a conditional use hearing for Black Buffalo three D. And I'll note that on the agenda is listed as not the overall plan because this is just for whether or not this is because it is considered floodplain construction. This is not the overall approval for the land development plan itself. But Ron or John, I can let either of you explain the difference between that, the land development plan.
I will give the John, we get into the relatively minor detail with respect to floodplain. Under our floodplain ordinance, any type of construction in the floodplain requires a conditional use approval. That is an approval by the Township Board of Supervisors. That is in addition to any other approval they may need, land development approval, that's something separate. Approvals for HOPs or other things, those are all separate. So in this case, because they intend to do some minimal construction in the floodplain, they need to have the approval of the Township Board of Supervisors to do that. And in order to get that approval, there has to be a public hearing so that the public can be advised of what the application is about. They can tell them, listen, they can comment, and they're otherwise notified about this matter. Now again, it's my understanding, the application question is very minimal floodplain effect, but I will have John get into that and explain what that is.
Yes, you're correct, Ron. The the impact is, I would say it's negligible. They have one discharge pipe with an end wall that discharges to the stream, which is the appropriate place for it to be. However, because of what you just said, there will be activity in the floodplain to construct this pipe, and therefore they need a secure conditional use to do it.
And will it increase any height within the flood elevation or anything within the floodplain? No. So that's what that would be about. Again, it's a it's a relatively minor matter, but it still requires to follow the rules, which is scheduling a public hearing so that it can be reviewed, along with also being reviewed by the Township Planning Commission. If they have not already done that, simply don't remember.
And what would be our deadline to have that hearing?
To have that done, I believe by October twenty-four. Let me just double check.
Our first regular meeting would be the twelfth. Otherwise, the the next one would be on the twenty-sixth in October.
Twenty-four. And again, I need to be able to advertise once a week for two successive weeks. No later than seven days before the hearing. And the property also has to be posted no later than seven days before the hearing. So if you can give me a hearing date tonight, then that now enables me to prepare the notices timely so that we can then conduct the hearing.
Well, it seems like the only, you know, meeting date before the expiration of the deadline to act would be October twelfth.
Get my calendar up here. Yes, it would be October twelfth. I'm not quite sure if that can make the deadlines. I mean, I suppose you could, the township could try to be cute when you say advertise once a week for two successive weeks, well not less than seven days before the hearing and see if we could get an add-in for Sunday the second and then Monday the third. That's once a week for two successive weeks. But that's, that's
Would it be reasonable to attempt to do like the second and the fifth and ask in the alternative that that the that they give an extension to add?
We could see if the applicant would be willing to give us an extension. Let's assume that we are looking at now the fourth month, the fourth Thursday, which is one of your other meeting dates, the twenty-sixth. All they would have to do would be given an extension to them, assuming you would meet on the twenty-sixth.
Right. Well, yeah, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth of October are the regular meeting dates for the board.
So if in fact they would give an extension to the twenty-sixth, then I certainly would have time to do that.
It's like, I don't think we should miss our chance to scrutinize this. Robert, Brian, do you?
I think let's ask for the extension. It's not that urgent and, but it is very important.
And I can contact Attorney Williams, who sometimes can be a little difficult in all due respect, but if we're, if if the board says tonight, well, we're going to do the hearing on October twenty-sixth, I can't see him not agreeing for one extra day. Or two extra days, literally, October twenty-fourth. I can't see him not agreeing to two extra days. But I won't be able to know that till I talk to him.
Brian, would you like to make a motion that we request that extension and tentatively schedule the hearing for the twenty-sixth?
Yes, definitely.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Lovenheim. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That will be ten twenty-sixth at six P M. Correct, Mr. Chair?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. The twenty-fourth is when our, the deadline expires, but we're asking them to extend the deadline two days so we can sufficiently advertise for the twenty-sixth for the public hearing. And that'll still be at six. Our next item up is a discussion with regard to the Orchard BJK Company's petition to rezone some parcels by Mountain Manor. Originally, this evening was supposed to be a public hearing on that matter. The reason why there is not a public hearing this evening is because the applicant, meaning the company Orchard BJK, who filed their petition, they submitted the incorrect parcel numbers and incorrect map with their application. So the board cannot act on something that's not technically complete like that. So we're not able to have the Board of Supervisors pick whether their map or their petition, the written one, is correct. There's no provision in the law. So they're going to either have to resubmit that application or we just ultimately will not actually consider it. That said, I believe the attorney for the company has expressed a desire for the concept to be reviewed. Ron?
Yes, he is asking that he be put on the Planning Commission meeting of Bank Mission meeting of October.
I think it's the October thirteenth.
Yeah, October. Be on the meeting of October thirteenth for Planning Commission. However, he also then wants to be on October nineteenth for a public hearing before the supervisors.
Well, one, we don't have a meeting that day, and two, you have to notify adjacent property owners thirty days in advance by mail, and then post.
You have that issue, plus the nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken, is the third Wednesday of the month, and I would solicit an upper Mount Buffalo Township when that their Planning Commission meeting. So I would not be available on the nineteenth. And if you would have a special meeting on the twentieth, let's just say you would, still would not be enough to get thirty days' notice.
Right.
Even if you would advertise today, you're not you're not able to give thirty days' notice. So I don't see it occurring until sometime in November. I know he and his applicants may not like that, but we can't change the law with respect to these timeframes.
Of course. That said, I know there's a number of folks that are here that are interested in this topic. If you'd like to make a comment, please just state your name for the record. That way it goes in the minutes if you're interested. Any comments on this? Go ahead, Ms. Clark. Yeah, Orchard BJK, that they're a company that is proposing to rezone some parcels by Mountain Manor, and they would like to rezone it specifically so they can build a warehouse. Well, that gets to our next item.
Do we know that for a fact, Jacob?
That's what they wrote on their petition.
Okay.
The one that we had to, the one that we did, you know, let people know. Because I know that there were people circulating petitions. I never saw the petition against it myself, but I know that there were folks that certainly were. Go ahead.
I thought you were the next item for that, but
Oh, go ahead. State your name for them.
But we were just concerned about that, about if there wasn't any idea of what it's for, or a warehouse, or their thing.
That's what they would like to do. Kalahari was years ago, but definitely not now. Although I would say I wouldn't vote to have Kalahari here either. But certainly, speaking only for myself, I don't think that rezoning to permit warehouses is the right approach. And I actually think curtailing them is the correct move, and that's what we're going to talk about in this this section here for the Municipalities Planning Code, Section six oh nine point two in our ordinance.
Okay, good. I feel the same way, Jacob.
Well, good, because I, sorry, I know the email is very long, but I sent a comprehensive email to our board so everyone can understand. But just so the public can understand, another municipality in Monroe County is facing even more warehouses than Smithfield is, and that's Pocono Township, where John happens to be their engineer also. And what their Township Commissioners did was invoke a portion of the state law that controls how we're allowed to govern land use, called the Municipalities Planning Code. They invoked a provision six oh nine point two, which begins something known as the Municipal Curative Amendment Process. Now, that sounds like a bunch of legalese, but the, essentially what that means is it allows a municipality to say portions of our ordinance are too old or invalid and shouldn't be enforced. And it allows them to propose a change to their ordinance that will cure the defect. And in our case, as Robert pointed out to me just this week, on an unrelated matter, Smithfield's Code of Ordinances, the definition of a warehouse, is incredibly ambiguous. It says, "A building primarily used for the storage of equipment, goods, and services." That's incredibly generic, and that was adopted well before two thousand seven. It's ordinance one eighty-seven. We are currently on our, on ordinance two forty-five, was our most recent one. So this goes back some time. I think, Brian, this was amended even before you were a supervisor.
Well, I wouldn't go that far back, but you're probably right.
So I mean, I would like personally for the township to invoke Section six oh nine point two to begin the curative amendment process because, as we see in the Lehigh Valley, these things are getting propped up just about anywhere. And they're starting in Pocono Township, they're starting in Cool Bah. The company that wants to rezone Mountain Manor specifically for that purpose, they're the ones that are building all the warehouses up in Cool Bah Township. So this would allow us on new, yes?
Yeah, Jacob, it's not just Marinello County, it's our neighbors, those are very, very close to us.
Well, for sure.
And I think, Ron, maybe even one of your municipalities might be involved in this too. The thing of it is, if we don't do this correctly and strongly, they'll come, and a lot of times they persevere with their attorneys and whatever. So I, again, I'd say we should go ahead with that.
Great. I mean, I think that it's important because, you know, Cool Bah Township is proposing, like, our definition is like ten words, and what Cool Bah is proposing is like sixty, and it's very specific. It talks specifically, you know, to not include retail sales, not include a truck terminal or distribution center, which is, you know, what people are concerned about with fumes and things like that. It may not necessarily affect existing projects that have already been submitted, but this was just recently invoked by Pocono, right, Don?
Yeah, and Pocono has two projects. One is almost at the tail end of the approval. They do have a conditional preliminary slash final approval. They submitted a second project, and then Pocono declared their ordinance invalid. And I think point of phrase, and the jury is still out as to whether that second project that was submitted can go forward under the old ordinance, or whether they are in fact going to be subject to the cure.
Let me ask Ron this question. In order for Black Buffalo to construct anything, they need the conditional use on floodplain, correct?
Correct.
So
Well, or they redesign.
Right.
Okay, I mean, they can redesign and not necessarily be in the floodplain. If that's what they do, then they dodge the requirement of floodplain.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if you submitted something for a conditional use, but the underlying land development use has other requirements added on to it after you've submitted, but not for the conditional use, would the new regulations potentially apply?
The conditional use would have to be conditions, the conditional use for upon obviously the approval of the land development plan. So now, if in fact the land development plan has been filed, and I think it has,
Right.
whatever you do is not going to affect that plan, right? Yeah. Any, if you perceive what the cure, then obviously the argument can be made that any other plans coming in have to not wait in line to see whether or not they comply with the cure, such as the BJK property, et cetera. But as to the Black Buffalo, if they have a plan in already, you're not going to
Yeah, when they submitted that earlier this year. I mean, I would still like to see if we're, I mean, there's going to be a long process for that. I think a lot of people have raised reasonable objections on that plan. We've got a lot of complaints, and I think the Conservation District has too, which we've been forwarding, you know, we've been forwarding the ones that we're receiving directly to the Conservation District, and they've addressed some of them, and now it's incumbent upon the company. But that said, it's reasonable to move forward with invoking six oh nine point two so we can correct for any future, because I would like to see that this is planned correctly. Clearly, clearly the existing, you know, the proposed uses of the future were not contemplated when when our ordinance was written some probably twenty, thirty years ago.
It's not so hard.
Have you looked at the letter from the Conservation District yet? I tried to. It's eight pages long and very complicated. I can't discern what much of it is about.
And I think it's only technical. I mean, I, I think it's still a completeness review, which means they didn't even start their technical review. So, yeah, no, they're dealing with a a difficult site. We all know what some of the challenges are out there, and no one's going to give them a pass. They're going to have to address the concern.
Well, it must be very difficult in the fact that for eighty years that it's existed as an airport, no one has succeeded in building anything there. I'm sure there have been other plans. But essentially, it's a swamp. No other plans?
Actually, Robert, in my eighteen years and living in this area for much longer, very, very seldom has anybody ever planned to build there. The only thing that there was a little bit of talk with Larry Simon and his his, I guess, whatever the hell he called it, I forget. But that never came, that official plans were never submitted to us. Other than that, I can't remember if anybody wanted to build anything. They loved it as an airport.
And the batch plant, right. That's correct. Well, that said, do I hear a motion that we invoke the Municipalities Planning Code, Section six oh nine point two in regard to the warehouse uses?
I'll make that motion.
Second motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Lovenheim. Any questions or comments?
Just remember, Mr. Chair, that in thirty days, a resolution
Right. Well, I would intend to adopt that resolution at our next meeting.
Specific findings, so we can't just do this out in the air.
Right.
Defining that validity, where the uses that are going to be permitted, where the uses that are not going to be permitted, or the class of uses that are going to be involved. So keep that in mind. They all have to be part of that resolution.
Absolutely. Okay. Sure, go ahead, Ms. Clark.
So can you focus that on the C C with the Orchard BJK or with Black Buffalo?
With regard to Black Buffalo complaints.
And the M C is not looking into the
No, there's not been any land development plan filed for that. They would have to have it reset. So it's presently zoned R1 low-density residential, and they are wanting to change it to the Economic Development Zone, and that's the only zone other than industrial zones that would permit that type of use. So without the zoning change, they wouldn't be able to file a plan for that, or it would get denied out of the gate. Right. That's true, although you probably can't prove a hardship since it's open space and was a resort and all that. All right. That's, that said, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay. Great. Our next item is the consideration to sponsor the Bushkill Emergency Corps Gala. They made a request, open-ended, to solicit our interest in sponsoring their gala, which is being held later on next month on October twenty-ninth. I think in the past, the township had taken out a full-page program ad. Given the other assistance that we are providing them, I think it's reasonable to just do the hundred-dollar program ad rather than anything else, but I leave that up to the two of you.
Well, I agree with you.
All right. Well, I'll move that we sponsor a full-page ad in the Emergency Corps Gala program. Wait here a second. Oh, to the tune of a hundred dollars. That said, motion by myself, second by Mr. Barrett. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is that Sharnie in also? The G A L line? Yep, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then next, our last item under new business is the consideration to approve the two thousand twenty-three minimum municipal obligation for our uniform pension fund. This is calculated by using state data from actuare, actuareo, actuareal studies. Yes, sorry.
Not like me.
Well, the municipal obligation for us would be fifty-four thousand four hundred dollars. And that's not really an increase if it's based on what the state's going to, you know, give us anyway. And it lists, you know, the twelve people that are vested and or active. So do I hear a motion that we approve our obligation for next year?
I'll, I'll motion for that.
Motion by Mr. Barrett. Wait here a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lovenheim. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is our Board of Supervisors report.
Jacob, Jacob, just, we want to say that very simply, the three supervisors are not involved with that.
Correct.
Okay, just.
Jacob, should I bring up?
Go ahead, Brian.
Sorry, Brian. Go ahead.
No, no, I just sort of make that note that we are not involved, even though we're employed part-time.
Yep, correct.
Should I bring up Jacob, the sign ordinance as G here?
That's up to, well, no, that you could make that part of your Board of Supervisors report or something, if you'd like, anything that the board wants to mention.
All right. We're on to the Board of Supervisors report, right?
Correct.
All right.
Sorry, Robert. Jacob, I have a question regarding the was there a motion that had?
There was no, no motion.
I've completed changes to the proposed Code of Ordinances on signs that, based on a meeting with the members of the Planning Commission, and
Well, you were actually at a Planning Commission meeting when it took place, correct?
Yeah, we did. We, that's right.
The last time we sent it.
Right, which was, I think, last May or something. Anyway, I've, the biggest change here is I think we should put it in its own chapter, which is Chapter nineteen, which you already have in the Code of Ordinances, but it's blank at this point. It's called Signs and Billboards. I think if we put it there, it's just easier to find because right now it's kind of buried in the Chapter seventy-seven zoning code. Because right now it's kind of buried in the uh chapter seventy seven zoning code. Um, so. I'd like us to send this to the PC, let them look at it, chew it over, make their. New comments and send it back to us and then we can deal with it from there. It's not, it's not very much different than it was, but it's organized differently and there's a few things in it that. Have been updated.
Well, if the Planning Commission wants to continue that discussion, I I see no problem. We haven't really. Discuss as a board, but I think that if if the Plan Commission wants to plan and 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 take a look. I have no problem and and we'd also ask the County Planning Commission, right?
I'm sorry, what?
We'd also ask the County Planning Commission for a review as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you'd like to.
Okay.
Alright. Well, it could be helpful if we just wanted a courtesy review, right?
I'll distribute to our Planning Commission, how's that?
That sounds fine and send us all a copy please when you do. Okay.
Well, yeah, you might, would you uh take that wood extra step then, Robert, and send it to the county PC?
Yep.
Then it's taken care of.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, do either of you have anything else to note before we pay our bills?
I have one matter, but I think it may be better suited to a uh executive meeting. I'll have to run that by you guys later.
Okay, yeah, just just give us a call or write an email and we can. Schedule one, even if we want to do it virtually, we can have, you know, Ron join us by Zoom or something like that.
Yeah, okay. I'll do that.
Right, that said, the only thing I would note on under uh my portion of the Board of Supervisors report. There's been a number of animals running around the municipal building. I think a lot of the those here in the audience that I got to. See them. I hope that if you're watching this and you live, you know, near the township, you can. Keep control of your animals. They're all friendly, but. I don't know what to do about that because they run away from us when we try to. Uh, find their owners.
What what are we talking here, Jacob?
Well, there's a dog, but apparently there's also been two, two small pigs.
Oh, God, no.
I I don't, they haven't done anything, but. You know, Lucas and I saw the dog once and we went down to the park to go try to help and. It ran away and then the person that was in the park, it wasn't their dog, so.
And two pigs?
Correct. I can appreciate that. Well, our uh obligations for the evening by way of bills is four hundred eighty thousand four hundred sixty, four hundred sixty six dollars and twenty six cents. Uh, the reason it is so large is not the general fund, but is the highway fund and is because we are making payment. For uh the contract paving on River Road. And that's, you know, to H and K Group and then it also includes. Hanging off the the truck as we committed to it at our last meeting. But that that said, the inflation there is this. Is only minute, the uh payment to H and K is slightly above what we expected. We normally budget two hundred fifty thousand for the contract paving, which is about one point one miles. This year, it was two hundred fifty six thousand because I think they ran out of uh. Uh asphalt early. But that said, all the rest of our expenses are are our regular bills. Does anyone have any questions on that? Do I hear a motion?
Uh, Jacob, I liquid fuels is just about exhausted.
Just about, um. I think we're we're nearing that point. Lucas, you can speak to that.
Uh, yeah, uh, Brian, I I can comment on that. Yeah, there there's just a a couple thousand dollars left in there. Um, and that will just, you know, pay some some of the regular small bills, um, but otherwise it's basically exhausted for for the year for any any other uses we we would have.
And PennDOT's recommended against transfers to liquid fuels, right?
Yeah, so so uh. Yeah, so so uh they they recommend, uh, we just pay things out of our general fund, um, just as, you know, uh. All other townships end up doing, the liquid fuel funds don't cover. Um, you know, anywhere near all the road maintenance that needs to be done. So, um, you know, it's recommended that we just, you know, continue paying out of general fund as as we already pay, you know, other expenses out of.
Can we have line items set up to do that?
And money transferred to liquid fuels doesn't come back. We we listed that about three years ago. We thought if we lent it to them, we could get it back, but no. So the general fund is the way to go, Lucas is right.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's it, do I hear a motion that we pay the bills?
I'll I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Loveheim, any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And now, do we have any public comments this evening? If uh if you speak, just make sure you state your name for the record so Lucas can get that in the minutes.
I can't understand anything.
Just want to speak up a little bit.
Go forward. You can repeat it, as long as we hear what you're saying, we can repeat it.
We have not received anything from them except just one new document the other day, which the board just received, which incorporated the. Uh complaints that were filed directly with the Conservation District and those are being, those were forwarded to the applicant. To address for their technical review letter, because like like our engineer said. They haven't been able to begin the technical review because they haven't. Uh, met the threshold for that yet and they do have to address those comments as as part of that. John, you would know that better than than me. They have to, they have to address the comments before they begin the review, correct?
That, yeah, that the review will not start until it seems complete. And so far, it it has not been completed.
You know, in on the airport.
Right.
And he did that within a hour. An hour and a half.
Right.
And then didn't see anything. Meanwhile, someone else at M C C.
Well, with regard to that, that won't happen until the formal review begins, so that that's that's after technical acceptance.
There may be a lot of discussion going on, but there will be a formal response to that. And if. I mean, there is a window when you have to search for the bog turtles and I don't do that myself. But I do believe. It is correct, you can't just go out for one day and say, oh, I didn't see anything. I do think you've got to. Uh, visit the site on a specific number of times over a specific period.
So they're not, they're not being displayed? Well, that that we can have our zoning officer go, you know, pay them a visit over because you're supposed to conspicuously display them by the zoning ordinance.
And then Black Buffalo. Is also does not have anything, permits, they're operating and they're putting their uh. Products on social media with a duty. I'd like to go where the waste product is going now, because I see them piled up. For weeks on end and then they're gone somehow and I'm I'm hearing the words and I, you know. The dumping temples issue. In the back of the product. Now, you know, the concern, I don't know what they're doing with their byproducts, if they're being uh, tight now. Was it human waste? How is it getting there?
That we can also address with.
There was, no permits are there, you know.
Well, there are certain things that they are able to do without a new permit. They are allowed to use the 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 temporary products, but that that's not by virtue of our ordinances. Um, the permit, you know, that they're seeking really is for, for the land development plan is for the construction of of the overall structure. And and the use uh therein, but that that hasn't been approved of at all yet. So anything that's done outside of what current law enables them to do. Is something that the Conservation District can address, so if you'd like, I can contact them with regard to potential dumping issues. And then they can, that's something they could do under existing things, under existing approvals, because right now they don't have any approvals except for. Uh, you know, the permit for um that building that was transferred for, or not transferred, but completed by Troy Norman. That's the only. Uh, land development approval that they have from us. Well, so they didn't finish it, Troy Norman completed it, so because he was the original permit holder, he was able to complete the construction. Absolutely. Of course, and I will, I will make sure that we email you and I'll I'll copy you when I submit the the report if that's alright with you. Okay.
And if there is a reply, can I be included?
Of course, I mean, they usually will copy everyone. We just haven't got anything from them except for that letter that we all got the other day.
The other day, right, okay.
I forget what day it was, but it was the letter that Robert referenced a couple minutes ago that has. All of the uh. All of the the correspondence they received from outside, uh, you know, from from residents and whatnot.
Yep. Okay.
I have to find it, but I will reforward it so everyone can easily access it. Chief Hike?
I'd like to uh thank you for. Your support. Um, with the bills we submitted. And uh helping us with the grant that'll save us all a lot of money. For radios, we have started working on that already. Along with the other six departments that are going in on that regional grant for radio.
Right.
It'll save us both, I think, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
That'd be terrific.
Our next step is uh, we're still waiting for the federal grant for AirPACs. Uh, we haven't been told no yet, so that's a good thing. Our AirPACs are outdated and old, so and that's what we use to enter burning houses, so. They're very important as well, and that is again another hundred forty five dollars. Also, we uh applied and were inspected and got approved for uh. A medical quick response service. Uh, so we have been licensed by the state of Pennsylvania for that.
Right.
And uh, we've already approached the borough about adding that to our response in the Borough of Delaware app. And I'm going to be doing the same in writing to you guys for our areas, with the towns over there. What that allows us to do is respond to the medical calls. With the ambulance, but we can get there quicker because we're right there usually, and sometimes it takes a little longer to get there. So we can uh render aid quicker. And get them stable before the ambulance arrives.
Right.
And uh, so I'll be submitting that and uh also be sending a letter for uh some response changes in our area.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm sure that, you know, as soon as you send that over, I think we can, you know, make sure we can address that at the next meeting. Certainly on the Q R S, that's great, you know, because we all know that the herd that, you know, the EMS system locally is is.
Yeah, absolutely, it's the whole county, we feel it everywhere. We have currently three E M Ts, a paramedic. And all our guys are certified uh A E D, P R and first aid.
Do you have others that are going to E M T classes now?
We have one other right now that is in the class. And uh, the department pays for that class, and the car in that class was seven hundred dollars and about two hundred hours.
About two hundred hours, rigorous, well, that's great.
Yeah.
Awesome, well, thank you, chief, we will certainly be in touch.
We appreciate everything you have to do, thank you.
Thank you, likewise. Anything else? Anyone else want to make any comments before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Hold on one sec, Brian, there's someone in the back, but if you want to speak up a little bit. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, we're we're in the process of of adding a page, so we've done that for some of the other projects that are proposed in the township like Black Buffalo. And then also the Shawnee Valley P R D hearings, so we're gonna have a page that has all the stuff that 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 we have as a board. So everyone can see what what they've submitted. Um, and then it'll also list the 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 next meeting, so as soon as we figure out if we get an extension, that'll list that meeting. We also have a newsletter. Um, which you can sign up for on the website too. Okay, great, but yes, it it. The ordinance requires that adjacent property owners that are directly adjacent to the parcels they propose to be zoned. They have to get a mail notification, but that will not happen unless they submit a new application. So as it stands right now, the application they filed is invalid. So because it's invalid, we can't notify you because that would require us to presume what they did correct or incorrect. We have to rely upon their information and because our zoning officer, um, I'll give you a copy of this now if you want. Um, this explains, you know, what they did that was not, uh, you know, correct and has our. Zoning review letter that says, you know, the spot zoning issues and things like that. So if they were to correct that and file a new application. Then we would be able to notify people directly by mail, but otherwise it's going to be published in the newspaper and on on the website. Thank you, anyone else?
If I am clear, Mr. Chair, so that the supervisor's position is that the application is not. Think we're incorrect, so it's being denied before there's a hearing.
No, it's not that it's being denied, it is that. They did not, you know, file the correct information, so like it's, the paperwork is technically complete, it's administratively complete. It's just not.
You want them to file a new application with the correct.
Or correct their information, that's the letter that the zoning officer.
Okay, that's fine.
But now I don't think we're taking any position on a denial outright. Like, we'll have to hear them out at their hearing, because they could theoretically tell us that they're correct and maybe we're wrong, but. Our zoning officer believes, you know, very strongly that that they filed the incorrect information, so.
That's fine.
That said, um, it could potentially be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Um, if they would grant uh. Well, not an extension, but if if the Planning Commission so chooses, right?
Right.
Okay. And we'll let you know about that too. But I think we probably have your email, so we can directly email you that too, and I think, Lucas, you had people sign in. So we can, we can even send, you know, a direct email about that too. No worries, I can, I can appreciate that. I can appreciate.
I think we have a a motion on the table for Brian, right, to adjourn?
Yeah, Brian moved to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Done.
Yep.
Take care, Brian, we'll talk soon.
Yep, Jacob, thank you. Robert, are you there? Uh, I'll give you and Jacob a call sometime tomorrow, okay?
Are you gonna come in at any time? I I hear rumors you might come in.
I am, I'm coming in, I'm gonna sneak in. I gotta see the pigs.
I offered to to be a roommate with you if you want.
I I I, yeah, we'll we'll talk.
Sounds good, thanks, Brian, have a nice night.
Yeah, you guys too, everyone. Bye bye.